Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. We have a great crowd tonight in chambers, so welcome to all of you that are here. Also to those that might be watching us on our public access television. This is the regularly scheduled Monday, September 16th meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Excuse me, Madam Clerk, could you start us off, please?
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you very much. If you would all please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer, Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Councilman Bob Greenwood. Please, Bob.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment comes in item 10 and 11. It should read, "A Resolution Establishing," in 10, "A Community Gardens Policy," and in 11, "A Resolution Establishing Farmer's Market Policy," and both of those would be in the city of Waterloo, Black Hawk County, Iowa, when supporting the creation and protection and encouraging the expansion and long-term sustainability of community gardens. And the first one, "A Farmer Markets," and the second. And also, we have an amendment in number 16, and that was correcting the contractor. So we have those corrections made. So with the amended agenda, I also move that we approve the September 9th regular session and also the minutes of the September 12th special session as proposed.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the agenda or either of the sets of minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one proclamation tonight. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to call Ms. Mary Potter up. Mary? On up, please. Well, where is everybody? In chambers.
(laughing).
If you guys didn't hear that, I don't think. If that's okay, I'm selling policies.
The older one comes here.
Policy. Mary, well, it's wonderful to have you here. We're here to celebrate Life Insurance Awareness Month. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas life insurance helps safeguard families' financial security, and nearly 80 percent of U.S. households have some form of life insurance coverage. And whereas the life insurance industry is a primary source of financial and retirement security to more than 75 million American families. And whereas the life insurance industry pays billions, with a "B," to beneficiaries each year. And whereas life insurance benefits are a tremendous source of financial relief and security to families who lose a loved one. And whereas many Americans lack adequate life insurance coverage or have no life insurance at all. And whereas during times like these, when many families are struggling, life insurance is more important than ever in the event of a premature death. And whereas September 2013 has been diagnosed, diagnosed, designated as Life Insurance Awareness Month with a goal of making consumers more aware of their life insurance needs. And now therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 2013 as Life Insurance Awareness Month, and I urge our citizens to learn more about life insurance and its benefits. And I'm going to give that to you and ask you to say a couple of words. I know that you are never without words, Mary, so please.
Well, as I said to him, I think all my partners are outselling life insurance policies, but I'm here. We think that it is very important that people look at what they have for their future and what the future means to their families if they would have an untimely death. And so one of our real thrusts right now is to see that everybody is protected in one way or another. And so our national group calls this Life Insurance Month, and it's just a good time to reflect on what you have.
Very good. Mary, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.[369.03][369.03](applause). All right. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B8. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $2,212,131.50. That's 2,212,131.50.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any discussion or questions or comments regarding the consent agenda at all? Any of them? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Let's move ahead, please, to item number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the 2013 Young Arena dehumidification project.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to the Young Arena dehumidification project?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against our item number two tonight? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Greenwood.
Is there a dehumidification process in there now? There's just no?
Paul?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. We have a standard HVAC system in there now that's 19 years old. This would be an improvement in that we would add a desiccation unit that would actually remove humidity more efficiently than a standard HVAC unit. We have the engineer here, Mike Broke, if you'd like to add anything to that.
(inaudible).
Oh, wow.[498.24][498.24](laughing). Okay. Thanks, Bob. Anybody else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I keep missing people, David.
One question, all we have.
Sure.
Paul and the engineer. So what does the system actually do for us? And will you be able to tell a difference?
It'll do a couple of things. Number one, we've got an old HVAC system that's not functioning properly, so that from that standpoint, it'll improve there. But mainly, it will reduce the humidity to, or actually the relative humidity, I guess, to an ideal level, which actually means a better ice quality and will, a better indoor air environment, should be more comfortable as well.
Be warmer in the stands?
It won't be warmer, but it'll feel better. How's that?
Very good.
That's what I've been told.
Anybody else? I'll look completely around the table this time. Thanks, Paul. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution in confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids and refer to Young Arena manager for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids and refer to Young Arena manager for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, please. We have three bids on this tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and our estimate is $350,000.
The first bid is from Plum Tech Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. The base bid is for $544,650, 544,650.00, with alternate one at $48,890, 48,890.00. Alternate two at $5,005,000.00. Alternate three at $71,378, 71,378.00. Alternate four at $4,250, 4,250.00, and alternate five at $51,242, 51,242.00. The next bid is from Shern Weber Water Conditioning Inc. of Toledo, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the base bid is for $616,500, 616,500.00. Alternate one is $38,900, 38,900.00. Alternate two is $12,200, 12,200.00. Alternate three is $40,700, 40,700.00. Alternate four is $21,600, 21,600.00. And the final bid is from Young Plumbing and Heating Company of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the base bid is for $429,800, 429,800.00. Alternate one is $33,500, 33,500.00. Alternate two is $3,900, 3,900.00. Sorry, that was alternate two. Alternate three is $56,200, 56,200.00. Alternate four is $3,950, 3,950.00.
Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for the development agreement with Sri Janapati, I guess, and Baran Balan Inc., DBA Fairfield Inn and Suites in the city of Waterloo for the construction of a new 81-room multi-story hotel development at the southeast corner of Crossroads Boulevard and Bob Street, adding $2.64 million in taxable value to site and tax rebates for eight years at 50%.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to this item?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this particular item at this time? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure being here, talking a little bit about that particular TIF. My name is Craig Christensen. I am the owner and developer of a hotel located at 2034 La Porte Road called the Hampton Inn. The Hampton Inn was built in 2006. In fact, it was one of the, it was the first hotel in Waterloo in 10 years. Since that time, we developed a hotel over in Cedar Falls called the Hilton Garden Inn. I speak for myself and another hotel owner, Sonny Barnat, who owns the Holiday Inn Express and the Motel 6 in that same area. We feel that the granting of a TIF puts a competitive advantage to the new hotel versus what we pioneered in building our hotels that are own. And I'll take it one step further to keep within my timeframe. Is that brand, the Fairfield by Marriott, is such an economic driver that my company would be willing to build one in Waterloo without any TIF. It's that strong of a project. So, any questions from me?
Counsel, do you have any questions of Mr. Christensen? At this time, anyway? Mr. Greenwood?
In the hotel you built in Cedar Falls, were there incentives, economic incentives?
No, I didn't have any TIFs. There were no TIFs.
No tax?
We had, we had an incremental, we used a FUD project that was available at that time, which was a financing option.
What was the terms on that?
Well, it's a floating rate, and it's based on a percentage of what, whatever a taxable yield will grant somebody. And then we have to provide, we had to go to a bank, it's much like getting a loan. We have to find a bank in that particular deal to give us a letter of credit to support the bonds, which was a 2% fee and the underwriting fees. And then it's a floating rate based on whatever the market will pay for an exempt tax bond, but it had nothing to do with taxes.
So there's no tax?
In other words, we approached it, we approached it two ways. We were going to do it conventionally or regular because the economics drove the transaction. It wasn't an enticement for us to do the project. This was something that was brought to our attention after we started the process.
So no property tax abatements?
No.
At all?
No.
Freeland?
No. Can I, can I get some?[1101.23][1101.23](laughing). Sure. You know, we paid $200,000 in property taxes last year in our Hampton Inn for Waterloo. Okay? That's 100,000 times eight years you're talking about. That's $800,000. That's a lot of money. And we're not asking for anything. We're saying, let's keep the playing field level. I will build a hotel without a TIF. Because why? It makes economic sense to do so. Simple as that. Free market. And it's a unique situation because of the brand and the new construction. It's not going in and doing a lot of renovation. This is a lot that's about 300 yards from us. So what's changed?
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Somebody else, please, come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, please, and same admonition to keep your remarks to three minutes, please, sir.
I am Atul Patel, and I'm the one who's putting this Fairfield Inn project. I'm calling right now for the economic development, for the TIF. I have also the hotel presence, in fact, heavy presence in Waterloo as well as Cedar Falls. In fact, I built a new hotel like what Mr. Christensen has said, and only thing, the reason why this hotel is going is we haven't done anything much because the land down there doesn't have a good infrastructure, which we found out when we built Candlewood Suites. That land cost us twice the money, and this is also going to cost double the money than what we are paying for the land just because the quality of the land and the infrastructure on it, and hence there was no development for a while. And as the city knows, I've been planning this not just for a second, it's been for two years, and we've been waiting for something to happen. We, in fact, Fairfield Inn is not a competition. There was already a Fairfield Inn across the Hampton Inn that we bought converting into Comfort Inn. We are putting sober dollars out there to 100% renovate the hotel and in turn replacing that existing Fairfield Inn with a new hotel, is a Fairfield Inn. So my question to everybody is why now the hotel people are coming and saying that I will build this and build that without the TIF? When two years down the road, nobody was, and Noel Anderson and the office staff can vouch for that one, that we've been interested in this Cedar Falls and Waterloo for the longest time. And this project doesn't have to go in Waterloo. It can go anywhere in Cedar Valley, it can go in Cedar Falls, and this project is not going to suffer. But only reason why I'm trying to put in Waterloo, because this TIF has come up, it helps just buy to, buy the land right, and plus the Fairfield Inn was in Waterloo, I wanted to replace it in Waterloo rather than going somewhere else. But this project going to happen one way or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
So I'm for the TIF.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make comments at this time, anyway? Briefly, Mr. Christensen, please.
Just, I will stand, as far as the two years, I'm not coming back for two years, but I will say that we will build a Fairfield Inn in Waterloo, Iowa without a TIF for enhancement, if that's the desire. That's up to him. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I'm not going to build a motel, but I am very interested in the TIF discussion because a TIF does not help the firemen that get a raise. It does not help you folks that get a raise. It does not help if you need another fire station. It does not help if you need more police, more fire. The TIF just helps those people do the infrastructure work out there. It doesn't help people like myself and the property owners. It just further burdens us with more taxes and more fees to take care of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Counsel, do you have questions at this point? Like to, Mr. Hart?
Make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the hearing, but I would like to get comments from Mr. Anderson first, please, before we take a vote on that. Noel, if you could just speak to, and by the way, before Noel gets up there, Mr. Christensen and Mr. Patel, both of you, both of you have invested already in the city of Waterloo, which we greatly appreciate. So no matter how counsel votes on this particular item, we, we do, again, very much appreciate your commitment to Waterloo and the investments that you've made here to date. Noel, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We're just kind of going through some of the information, why this is proposed and why it's on the agenda. Of course, the Crossroads area is an older shopping center area, being developed primarily back in 1968. We did put the Crossroads Tax Increment Finance District over a large area of the city where we thought we needed to see some new development. We had not seen a lot of new buildings, and also where we have some infrastructure needs in the, in the near future if the development is to occur there. Specifically for the item at hand, one of the policies that we put in the Crossroads TIF district is that we will give one year of tax rebates for every, at 50%, for every $1 million of new taxable value created. We also put a caveat in the policy that for sites that qualify under brownfield or grayfield or under the state code provisions, that we could give more to try and make those sites work because they're redevelopment sites. They're not greenfield sites. There are innate problems with the site. The definition of an industrial commercial, of a grayfield in the state code is an industrial or commercial property where the infrastructure on the property is outdated or prevents efficient use of the property, including vacant, blighted, obsolete, or otherwise underutilized property. With the site at hand, there is a sewer system that comes into the site, runs parallel with the roads, and then cuts back out of the site. The sewer, in its current location, would not allow for any large projects to be built in the site. It'd be difficult to put some smaller buildings on there as well. I'm not sure why the sewer was designed this way. Again, this was back in the 60s. There are some overhead utility lines that come on to the property from the south, at the south end, about four lots down, they are in the right of way where they should be for whatever reason. Perhaps it was in La Porte Road, it was a highway, and there was less, there was more right of way, or, or just the inability to find the proper property line. But the overhead lines come on to the property, so they will have to be moved out to the right of way or put underground or both. The third thing that they've encountered with this site, and we've seen the soil reports, is there's a large amount of fill that was probably brought in possibly from the I-380 project. So there's a lot of soil in this area that is difficult to build on. They will have to bring in suitable soil conditions for construction. So that's why we have proposed the project at hand. For the eight years at 50%, we used a one-year 50% for every new million dollars worth of taxable value. Then we calculated out some of the cost, working with Mid-America, working with the developer on what those cost estimates would be for the additional years at 50%. I'd also like to remind the counsel and everyone watching that property taxes are one thing that businesses bring in, obviously in the TIF district. The new taxable value is captured in the TIF district. The city does have the ability to release new taxable, new taxes from a TIF district at some point if it wishes, and also that new businesses, new projects bring in, new businesses, new jobs, hotel motel taxes in this case, local option funds, new people visiting and spending their money at existing business in close proximity to crossroads. The strength of the crossroads area as a regional commercial draw will help bring people here for the campgrounds, downtown museums, and other entertainment. Again, we are looking for projects to help strengthen crossroads area as a commercial draw.
Do I have questions of Noel?
I got a couple of questions.
Davis, please.
So Noel, what other, what other properties in that area would qualify for something like this?
The next item on your agenda is the former Kmart Plaza. That also qualifies as a grayfield, basically for the amount of time that it's been a vacant property. The majority of that property's been vacant for a certain amount of time period that meets the state code provisions. So that one is also recommended for the maximum of 10 years at 50% because of the amount of blighted property that we had out there. And of course, part of their, their project with that is they were demolishing existing parts of that older building because it was outdated. It was unusable in its current condition for retail needs, retail sizes that they see in today's development. In terms of, we haven't done a full infrastructure study of the entire area. I don't know that there's many sites as bad as, as these two in terms of where the infrastructure locations are, but we'll definitely be finding that out as we continue to develop in the area.
So you would work with Mr. Christensen, then, too, to find a suitable place, suitable incentives?
That is correct. I mean, any, any project within the Crossroads TIF district would be eligible for some type of incentives, and we just need to calculate what those are based on the specifics of the project.
But this one is specific to that piece of property?
Correct.
Counsel, further? Mr. Greenwood?
I, I just think inherently that on this, where there's other hotels that have developed in this area without any type of incentives, I don't think it's fair for the existing hotel businesses there to compete with somebody that gets a, gets a tax rebate incentive. I just don't, I don't think it's fair. I can see it in, in number four here, that, you know, the grayfield redevelopment where there's been buildings there that have been sitting empty and neglected. I mean, I think that's what the TIF is for. I just, I don't, I don't see it as, and I think it gives the, the owner an unfair advantage over his competitors in, in that particular, in the hotel business.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Noel again, so...
Please.
I understand what was going on eight years ago, and that was eight years ago, and now we're here today, but, so what we're proposing, or what you'd like us to do here in item number three, if I wanted to build a hotel in Cedar Falls and Cedar Rapids and Dubuque, would I expect to get a similar offer in those communities is what we're looking at here today?
I think it would depend on the location.
On a similar location, then?
You know, I'll use Corvale as the best example, I think, because that was a brownfield site as well, where, if you've all been there, to where they're building some new, there's a new Von Mauer going out. a new Von Mauer going out right in front of a new multi-story office building right in front of that hotel. That was all a big brownfield site, so they gave incentives to clean that up, using grant money for cleanup and all that, and then getting the hotel project there. I'm not sure of exactly all the other communities that you noted there. That's just the one that comes to mind.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Mr. Hart?
Mr. Anderson or, forgot the gentleman's name, would, how many, how many jobs would possibly be created for this?
Mr. Patel?
It will be, I think it's on 15 to 20.
Okay.
Fifteen to twenty.
People job already, I might note.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Welper?
Looking at the information that we've been giving, the extras it's going to cost just to develop this site is another $290,000 above what normal construction is. Plus, this, this project will create $56,000 in new taxes, even though there's going to be a tax credit here. Versus the $6,000 it's bringing in now, it'll bring in another $50,000.
Further? Okay, there is a motion and a second to close the hearing and to receive and file oral and written comments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution approving said development agreement and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Getty?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
The motion carries, four to three. Thank you very much, counsel. Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart was first.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the development agreement with Crossing Point LLC, FKA Proactive Holdings for LLC, and the city of Waterloo for the redevelopment of the former Kmart Plaza site, including the main building, and creation of multiple outlots, adding 3.5 million in new taxable value to site and tax rebates for 10 years at 50%.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to this particular item? Item number four.
No, we're not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number four, Crossing Point LLC? A second, a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution approving said development agreement and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries.
Mr. Greenwood?
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty, you're going to take the first three there, please, five, six, and seven?
Yes, sir. On the resolutions, item number five is a resolution approving the award of bid to Murphy Tractor and Equipment of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $77,830 for the purchase of two 2013 John Deere 320D skid loaders. Item six is a resolution approving the award of bid to Boland Recreation of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $54,925 for the FY 2013 Gates Park Playground Project. And number seven is a resolution approving the award of bid to B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $127,088.56 for the FY 2014 Sidewalk Repair Assessment Program, Zone Three, contract number eight, five, two.
Second.
Very good. Motion and second on five, six, and seven. Counsel, do you have any questions or discussion regarding any of those three? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention I will be abstaining on item number six, as that's a family member of mine.
Okay. Thank you. Sir? Anything further? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, on five and seven, abstain on six.
Very good. The motion's carry. Next three, please, eight, nine, 10.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Number three is a resolution approving contract bonds and certificates of insurance with B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $127,885.56 for the fiscal year 2014 Sidewalk Repair Assessment Program, Zone Three, contract number eight, five, two, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number nine is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2013 Cooperative Agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Fair Housing Assistance Program, in the amount of $18,350, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 10 is a resolution establishing a community gardens policy in the city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa, in supporting the creation and protection and encouraging the expansion and long-term sustainability of community gardens.
Mr. Welper, you did so well on that one. Why don't you take 11, too? They're virtually the same, please.
Okay. Number 11 is a resolution establishing a farmers' market policy in the city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa, in supporting the creation and protection and encouraging the expansion of long-term sustainability of farmers' markets.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding eight, nine, 10, or 11? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, if we could, I know we've got some folks in the audience from the Blue Zones group. If we could maybe just have a little overview on 10 and 11 for the audience, I think that'd be appropriate.
Sue, please.
Hi, I'm Sue Beach, program manager for the Blue Zones Project, and just thrilled with the success that Waterloo has had with the project. We have been involved with helping establish a few more gardens in Waterloo, which is great to see. We just actually did a little video, which I hope to share with all of you soon, from the Burmese gardens that were started. Amazing. We could all learn a little bit from the process. We went and gave some seeds and some tools, and what an outstanding garden that, that there is there. And so, you know, we've had great success with offering produce, fresh produce to so many citizens in Waterloo, and, and these two will just help continue that. We are starting to overcome the notion that it's more expensive to eat healthier, and we are starting to be able to teach people how to create and generate their own food and, and have a healthy lifestyle. And so, the Blue Zones Project is extremely happy with that, and, and we appreciate all the support that the city has given, as well as the community. And then, just a, a quick update, we actually have been working with a lot of volunteers and, and really have a great partnership with the Cedar Valley Volunteer Center, and have recently learned that over 200 volunteers have been created for the community, not just for Blue Zones Project, but because of Blue Zones Project, that can help and work through some of the community gardens and the farmers' markets, as well as all, all other kinds of opportunities for nonprofits in the area.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate it very much. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please. I'm sorry, is anybody else, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just real quickly, I just, Sue was pretty humble, but you know, that Burmese garden, especially the Blue Zones Group, that was such a collaborative effort with Iowa State Extension Habitat for Humanity, the churches in that Church Row area. I think Catholic Charities was involved. There were several people that donated land and tools, and, and that thing has really done well. And a couple weeks ago, they had a, a similar event over at the Jesse Cosby Center. And I wasn't familiar with that, maybe some of the other council members were, but it's unbelievable, the gardens are in that part of town, too, and the, the neighbors that are working together. And I know in the Church Row neighborhood, we've got some of the Burmese folks working with some of the Hispanics and kind of getting to know each other, and I know that's all part of the purpose, too. So I think it's just a, a great idea, great project.
Thank you, sir. Further? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, let's do the last two, 12 and 13, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move to adopt a resolution approving the submittal of the FY 2013 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPR, for CDBG and home program activities for the period of July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2013, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And 13, I move to adopt a resolution resetting the date of public hearing and taking of bids at September 23rd for the FY 2014 2672 and 2736 Logan Avenue Sanitary Services, contract number eight, six, one.
Ms. Cole, 14 is also a resolution. Why don't you just do that one, too, please?
I move to adopt a resolution setting the date of hearing as October 7th to approve the request by Hawkeye Property Management to rezone 1.07 acres of land from R3 Multiple Residence District, R4 RP Plan Multiple Residence District located near the intersections of Ravenwood Circle and Ravenwood Road, for the purpose of constructing two new 12-plex buildings, along with two 9-stall garages that are associated with the multiple family uses, and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, do you have any discussion on 12, 13, or 14? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Let's do 15 and 16, please. Mr. Hart?
Move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing as October 7, 2013, to approve a development agreement with the Iowa Development Enterprises LLC to authorize the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally described as a former Van Eaton school site for the purpose of constructing five new single-family homes, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. 16, I move to approve final change order for an increase of $163.20 with KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the pavement markings in conjunction with U.S. Highway 63 and university traffic safety improvements.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, counsel, do you have any discussion on 15 or 16? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I just was wondering, Iowa Development Enterprises, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that name. Is that somebody we've done business with in the past? Is that a new developer?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, that's Jason Guthrie and Tyler Duda. They're the ones that have built the houses out in the Summerland.
Oh, okay.
Park area. I don't know if Rudy has anything to add. The Community Development Board, really, in looking at that state program, wanted to utilize the, the program of down payment assistance for different sites throughout the city of Waterloo, and this is a site that they chose in this area of the community we thought would be a great impact.
And Noel, is this, I'm sorry, is this the first time they built in this particular area?
Yes, it is. Yes, we used some community development money to tear down the former Van Eaton school site, and that really opened up that site. It's a 2.2 acre site. They'll be utilizing about half of that, about one acre, for these five houses, and we hope to continue the development trend in that area in the near future.
Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you, counsel. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, all, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, counsel. Good meeting tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business. If there's anyone that has comments, questions for mayor or council, now is the time to do so. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Randy Herod, 111 Highland Boulevard. I just got a few questions, and I have copies of this for each of you, so you can take all the time you want to answer them in detail, written reports, all that kind of stuff. Right. Okay. First question is, which city council members have received the line item accounting of the new city of Waterloo Animal Control Function?
Randy, those are all available. All they have to do is come ask for them. They're all, it's all public record. It's all available. If they want them, all they got to do is come to the finance office.
Has anybody asked for it? What is the current and updated financial projection for the Waterloo Animal Control Function, and is this still on target to meet the proposed figures that supported the council vote on this issue?
We're not going to answer all your questions tonight, Randy.
Okay. As of this date, I haven't seen a request for bid to renovate the city garage into an animal holding facility. When will this bid request occur? Often such bid requests are accompanied with an estimated cost. Is there such an estimate? And if so, what is it? The Waterloo Animal Control Committee has been requested to be formed by councilperson Cole. Has that committee formation been accomplished?
Yes.
Okay. If so, who are the members serving on this committee, and what is their contact information? What is the mission statement for this committee? What are the boundaries for this committee? I'm talking about geographical boundaries in terms of, are we only doing part of the city, all the city, outside the city, whatever is the committee going to look at? And what are this committee's scheduled meeting dates so that citizens of interest may attend? How do we get those?
Okay. Randy, at, at present, those meetings, it's, it's a mayor's committee that I have appointed. Those will not be open to the public meeting.
Excuse me? They won't be open to the public?
That's correct.
That's interesting. Nice to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. You bet. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, move to receive...
Mayor? Excuse me.
Mayor, if I may, I'm speaking to the people in Word Five and who live around Dry Run Creek. I've had a number of requests of information in regards to the new flood plan. I know we've told the citizens that this fall, we would have some information on, on the new flood map, and we do not have that as of yet. People are getting their new premium notices and are questioning whether they should pay it, knowing that, that this will be a new flood map. And, and yes, you, you must keep your, your insurance current because we're still dealing with, with the old map. There is a bigger waters flood insurance reform act of 2012, which is allowing people to maintain the preferred rate for insurance for the third year. Should you let your insurance lapse, they could force you to pay the full amount, starting right away. So make sure that you keep your insurance current, and as soon as we have information, we'll pass that along to you.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Welper.
Motion to receive and file oral comments, adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Were adjourned. Thank you very much.